Good afternoon. The term now is for eighteen on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I would like to call for the meeting. This is a special meeting about study session. So at this time, meeting called to order. Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take a vocal call?
Thank you. Mayor Wynn?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I'm here.
District one, Councilwoman Van West. District three, Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
District four, Councilmember Nguyen. Mayor, you have a quorum with District one, Councilwoman Van West, and District four, Councilmember Nguyen absent.
Staff, can I get an idea of, did they inform? What about the other council? Did they inform you prior to the meeting?
So...
That they're going to be late? Or are they going to attend the meeting?
Yes, no, so Councilwoman Van West had expressed earlier that she wasn't going to be able to make today's meeting regardless. And Councilman Nguyen, he's running late right now.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much. So salute to the flag. Today is going to be Vice Mayor Manzo, and then invocation by District three, Councilmember Mark Nguyen. Please stand.
Please stand.
Ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we meet tonight to conduct business of our city government. Help us keep in mind that we are here to serve the people of Westminster and enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all of the citizens we represent. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Manzo, and then Councilmember Mark Nguyen, and for the salute to the flag and the invocation. At this time, I would like to ask the Madam Clerk to go ahead and read the instruction for the oral communication. And I just want to remind everyone that this is oral communication for study session only. And the topic for today is fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit a card to the city clerk. When our name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We have one speaker tonight, Teri Reins.
Hello. I hope you all reviewed the entire report and are prepared to have a robust discussion today and ask intelligent and thought-provoking questions unlike years past. Councilmembers are not accountants. This information should be presented at an executive summary level in an easy-to-read and understand format. Starting with, provide dollar and percentage differences between FY twenty-five estimated actual and the proposed twenty-six budget. Only dollar variances between FY twenty-five adjusted budget and estimated actual are shown. The proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget cannot be analyzed easily without them. Key variance notations should be on every schedule. Staff is seeking direction on the supplemental request list. Should be the first attachment, not the last. Some verbiage justification, but no workload stats except for the one request. Why? The request amounts are fully burdened costs, so why not make that clear? And number, the request for easy reference. Council, this is not an all or nothing. You must vet each request independently on its own merit. Number one, water accountant, one, ninety thousand. Ask who is doing all this work now? Yes, regulations are ever-changing and meters are being changed out, but most of the tasks are already being handled by current staff, right? Did the city just start shutting off water for non-payment? Need workload stats. Two, police services dispatch manager, hundred forty-eight thousand. Three, and four, two full-time parking enforcement officers, hundred fifteen thousand. Absolutely. Ask for details of the part-time wage reductions cited. How many officers will remain part-time, if any, and what daily coverage will be? Need workload stats. Five, upload or upgrade two part-time water maintenance helpers to one full-time water tech, fifteen thousand. Ask, will anyone have to be laid off? Going from two bodies to one with different job descriptions begs the question. Six, upgrade one part-time water admin assistant to full-time, fifty-three thousand. Ask, who is doing all the work now? Can this upgrade be justified? Need workload stats. Seven, convert forty hours of part-time CS coordinator wages to one full-time admin assistant, forty thousand. Ask, will anyone have to be laid off or are the positions vacant now? Eight, upgrade one part-time building inspector to full-time, seventy-six thousand. The only request presented with limited workload stats. Ask, will anyone have to be laid off? This building inspector upgrade seems reasonable, unlike many planning requests in the past. Vacancies are normal. Budgeting all budget positions at a hundred percent is not, essentially padding the budget. The Government Finance Officers Association agrees. The artificial salary savings are then used to fund additional spending without formal budget appropriation. It's concerning to see nine million dollars of reserves used over five years to balance the budget, even with major Y and major E revenue. Council, you must take this budget seriously and scrutinize all spending and prioritize approving new revenue stream projects. You can't just keep adopting the status quo budgets and adding positions because the well will run dry. Say no to status quo. And I can't even express how disappointing and scary it is that these two councilmembers are not here for this session and they were not present for the whole strategic plan session. Those are the two most important sessions this council is charged with doing. And their absences, there must be consequences, and there will be complaints filed.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we go into the discussion of fiscal year from twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. So stop before, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is our proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So I've added this slide to our presentation to give you an idea of how to read our budget document. So this is a fund statement, which is under our summaries tab, or fund statements tab, excuse me, in the budget. And I've labeled each item. So A, the top left, six oh one Utility Conservation Fund is the fund name and the number. And this page layout is consistent throughout the document. The next column, twenty-three, twenty-four, is the prior year revenue and expenditure information, and this is actual audited numbers. The next column, which is labeled C, is the twenty-four, twenty-five adjusted budget numbers for revenue and expense. D is the estimated actual, how we're going to end the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which is basic, in most cases, the same as was presented at mid-year. E, and it's a little blurry on this, I apologize, but that's the difference between the adjusted budget and the estimate for revenues and expenditures. F is our proposed budget that we're reviewing today. And G, in green, is the proposed budget with supplementals. The supplementals only hit three funds, so on the fund statement pages, only three have that green column. But all of the detailed pages, which are under the department headings, all have that green column, even if there are no changes. If you go further down the page, H is the revenues. So this is the detail for this particular fund on revenues. I would be the expenses, salary and benefits, maintenance and operations, capital outlay. We finally, or next, we have transfers. We then go down to K, which is the change in our position, so our increase or decrease of our balance. And finally, L and M, L is the beginning, so where we started the year, and M is how we're projected to end the year. This slide is to give you an understanding of the components of the city budget. The general fund accounts for most services that people associate with the city: public safety, public works, park and recreation. Special revenue funds are for specific purposes and are legally restricted with, like gas tax, ARPA, CDBG. Capital projects funds account for major improvements funded by grants and transfers from other funds. Enterprise funds or water funds are funds that are self-sustaining. Fiduciary funds account for resources held for the benefit of parties outside the city. In our case, it's the successor agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency. Internal service funds provide a service to other departments, like building maintenance and vehicle services. All of these funds will be discussed in more detail on future slides. This slide shows the same groupings as the previous slide, but in a pie chart. The total city budget is a hundred fifty-four point three million dollars. The general fund, shown in teal, is the largest, with ninety point five million or fifty-eight percent. Water, shown in gray, is the next largest, at twenty-four point two million or sixteen percent. Internal service funds total thirteen point seven million. Capital projects and economic development funds are twelve point three million. Special revenue funds, seven point seven million or five percent. And then the fiduciary funds is five point nine million or four percent. As I said, special revenue funds are from revenues legally restricted or assigned for specific purposes: gas tax, measure M, CDBG, home, ARPA, FRC, AQMD, and police grants are most of them. Revenues from these funds total thirteen point nine million, and expenditures total seven point seven million. There are transfers to capital projects totaling nine point three million in the special revenue funds. All unspent ARPA funds will be carried over to the previously allocated projects and must be completely spent by December thirty-first of twenty-six. The water funds are comprised of the Water Operating Fund, Water Conservation Fund, and Capital Projects Fund. Revenue is budgeted at twenty-three point five million, mostly coming from charges for service. A majority of the twenty-four point two million in expenditures are in pump and basin assessment, eight point two million; salaries and benefits, five point two million; maintenance and operations, five point nine million; and capital projects are four million. The last water rate increase was in February of twenty twenty-one and included five years of adjustments through January twenty twenty-five. There are three new position requested as supplementals in the water fund totaling a hundred fifty-eight thousand, which will be discussed in more detail later in the presentation. Internal service funds are used to account for the financing of goods or services provided by one department to other departments of the city and are funded by department charges on a cost reimbursement basis. The city has five internal service funds: motor pool, general benefits, liability administration, information systems, and government buildings. The total budget for these funds is thirteen point seven million. Three of these funds, general benefits, equipment replacement, and information systems, are currently below the minimum fund balance policy level of five hundred thousand, primarily due to costs for claims and capital projects. Three million is needed to bring the internal service fund group to the recommended minimum reserve level of the five hundred thousand per fund. The proposed budget includes fifteen millions in capital project requests: two hundred thousand for lighting projects; two hundred thousand for storm drains; three hundred fifteen thousand for park improvements; four million in water system improvements; ten point one million for street improvements; and two hundred twenty-five thousand in city building and vehicle upgrades and improvements. These projects are funded with transfers in from special revenue funds, water funds, and one point five million from the general fund, which is recommended to be transferred in the current year from savings. The Economic Development Fund is also in the capital projects category. This fund has one point three million in expenditures, which includes the vehicle rebate program. The ending balance available in the Economic Development Fund is three point two million. Based on the current year projections from CalPERS, it will cost two hundred sixty-four point six million dollars to pay off our unfunded pension liability in twenty twenty-one years. And the annual cost will increase an additional three point seven million through fiscal year thirty, thirty-one, making the total seventeen, almost eighteen million at the annual payment. And it'll then, at that point, start to drop slightly. As you can see, thirty-one, thirty-two goes down a little bit. If the city were to pay this unfunded liability off in fifteen years, the annual cost would be sixteen point eight million, and we would save twelve point three million dollars. If we were to pay it off in ten years, the annual cost would be twenty-one point nine million, but we could save forty-five point five million dollars. In twenty seventeen, the city began setting aside monies in two Section one fifteen trust accounts to help pay for pension and retiree medical obligations. As of March thirty-first, both the pension and the retirees' medical trust account had a balance of six point two million dollars. The city's retiree medical is currently paid for on a pay-as-you-go basis, and the annual payment is three million dollars. The, both of these trust funds can only be used to pay pension and medical costs and can help in the future with budget shortfalls. Future pension cost projections will fluctuate based on the CalPERS investment returns. The total outstanding pension liability at six thirty twenty-four was one hundred forty-six million, and the twenty-five, twenty-six payment is fourteen point two eight million, as shown on the previous slide. By paying this unfunded liability payment to CalPERS in July rather than monthly, the city is able to save interest and transfer that savings of four hundred sixty-two thousand to the one fifteen trust. The OPEB retiree medical trust is held with the California Employers Retirement Benefit Trust, or SERP, fund. The total outstanding OPEB liability at June thirty twenty-four was forty-three point four million. The annual payment is three million, and the city transfers two hundred fifty thousand to the trust annually. The general fund proposed budget is the first balanced budget in six years. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city and accounts for all tax and revenue to provide city services. The budget projections include employee negotiated contracts and contribute six hundred twenty-four thousand to reserves. This does not include any supplemental requests. The budget with supplemental requests contributes two hundred forty-four thousand to reserves. Revenue projections increased four point six million from the prior year, and expenditures increased three point five million from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. General fund revenues, as I mentioned, are budgeted at ninety-one point two million. Eighty-one percent of general fund revenue comes from taxes, followed by charges for services at eleven percent and investment in rental at three percent. The remaining categories total five percent. This slide is going to further break down our largest source of revenue, which is taxes, at seventy-three point six million. Property taxes are thirty percent, or twenty-one point eight million. Most of this revenue in this category comes from the property tax in lieu of VLF, which is budgeted at thirteen point seven million. Sales tax at twenty-five percent, or eighteen point seven million, is shown in the blue pie slice. Our largest source of revenue in this tax category is our locally generated transaction use tax, our measures Y and E, and they contribute thirty-one percent, or twenty-three million dollars, to the general fund tax category. Utility users' tax brings in eight percent, or five point eight million, and the remaining sources, business license, franchise, transient occupancy, and property transfer tax bring in six percent, or four point three million. I've showed this slide before, but I think it's important to see what others, the share of property tax received by our surrounding cities. For Westminster, we receive seven point four percent in our general fund, which is highlighted by the red bar. We also receive two percent, that's specifically dedicated to our community lighting fund, which is not shown on this chart. Westminster has one of the lowest property tax shares among Orange County cities. Our residents pay the same property tax rate as everyone else, but less of the revenue comes back to our city. Most of the property tax collected in our city goes to schools at seventy-one percent, and the county gets twelve percent. The only cities lower than Westminster are structural fire fund cities, meaning they don't pay for fire services out of their budget. Our seven point four is eight point two million dollars and is our second largest source of, no, I'm sorry, the seven... Well, it's, excuse me, property taxes are second-largest source, but that's because it includes the property tax in lieu of VLF, which is added to the eight point two million. This chart shows general fund expenditures by department. Most of the costs are related to public safety. Police at forty-four point nine million or fifty percent. Fire is nineteen point seven million or twenty-two percent. General government and public works are nine percent each. Community development is five percent, and community services is four percent. This slide shows the estimate for the current year in the first column. Based on these projections, we will end fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five adding one million of reserves to, adding one million to our reserves. The proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget adds six hundred twenty-four thousand to reserves, and the projected ending reserve balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-five is forty-six million. The next four columns are projections for the next four years based on the proposed budget. Each of the future years includes one point five million in street projects funded from the general fund. It is necessary to continue to fund street-related capital projects from our general fund in order to meet our maintenance of effort requirement to continue to receive measure M two funds. The fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six street projects are recommended to be funding from savings in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and are included in the current year estimate. The council and community prioritize city services through the passage of the transaction use tax revenue measures Y and E. Without these measures, the city would have been out of funds by fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which is our current fiscal year. As it indicated in the prior study sessions and discussions, the passage of the sales tax measures would provide our community a lifeline as we pursue additional revenue sources through increased retail development and other economic development projects. These are the changes from the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Revenue projections increase four point six million. Property tax projections increase six hundred eighty thousand. Sales tax increase five hundred fourteen thousand. Transaction use tax increase six hundred thirty thousand. Charges for service increase one point seven million. Fines increase three hundred five thousand. Investment in rental increase three hundred sixty-two thousand, and license and permits increase two hundred fifty-five thousand. Expenditures increased three point five million. PERS retirement cost increase one point seven million. Part-time minimum wage increase a hundred forty-one thousand. Our OCFA contract increase four point five percent, or six hundred sixteen thousand. Salary and benefits increased per MOUs at one point one million. This budget will include a public records request line item, object four zero zero nine five, to better track costs associated with the Public Records Request Act. And the five new full-time positions are requested as supplementals in the general fund totaling three hundred eighty thousand. These supplemental requests are the discretion of the City Council. The costs for supplementals are shown fully burdened. There are eight requests for new positions, five in the general fund and three in water. I will summarize each of the positions, but staff is available to answer any questions. In community services, there's a request for a new full-time administrative assistant position, which is replacing two part-time positions to provide consistent and reliable coverage and reduce the long-term costs associated with high turnover. The full-time position costs ninety-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven, and is offset by fifty-four thousand, three ninety-five, of part-time wages. The net cost to the general fund would be forty thousand, three hundred two dollars. In community development, there's a new full-time building inspector position request to replace one part-time position to devote more time to residents' construction jobs and assist with trade plan checks. The full-time position costs a hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred forty-six, and is offset by thirty-seven thousand, three hundred, of part-time wages. The net cost to the general fund is seventy-five thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars for this position. In the police department, there's a request for a new full-time police dispatch manager to oversee the operation due to technology upgrades, changes in dispatching requirements, and high turnover. The full-time position costs a hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-three. There are also requests for two new full-time parking enforcement officer positions replacing two part-time positions assigned to street sweeping and paid parking enforcement. The full-time positions cost eighty-five thousand, nine hundred each and are offset by fifty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-five, of part-time wages. These positions have the potential to increase revenue, and the net cost to the general fund is one hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars. There are three positions requested in the water fund. In finance, a new full-time accountant one position is requested to assist with switching of new meters, courtesy phone calls on high-balance accounts, payment plans, closed accounts, final notices, and processing return mail. The full-time position costs eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-five. In public works, there's a request for a new full-time water technician one position to replace two part-time positions for meter reading and customer service. The full-time position costs eighty-five thousand, three hundred sixty, and is offset by seventy thousand, eight hundred twenty-two, of part-time wages. The net cost is fourteen thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars to the water funds. There's also a request for a new full-time administrative assistant one position to replace one part-time position to assist with meter exchange, cross-connection, lead and copper rule revisions, brake registry, demand forecast, fire flow, and ADUs. The full-time position costs ninety-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and is offset by forty-one thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars of part-time wages. The net cost for the new request is fifty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars. During the strategic planning meeting on April twenty-eighth, the City Council made setting priorities for spending transaction use tax, measures Y and E, revenue, and objective. Priorities for allocating any surplus funds could be included in the fund balance policy, which is approved annually with the budget in June. The current policy includes an emergency reserve allocation of seventeen percent of general fund operating expenditures. Additional categories could be added to the policy, committing a percentage or dollar amount of the annual surplus. Examples of categories could include reserving money or allocating an amount to future pension costs, infrastructure improvements, or increasing the emergency reserve percentage above seventeen percent. Finally, staff is looking to the council to provide input and direction on the supplemental budget requests and the fund balance policy finding priorities. The final proposed budget will be presented for adoption at the June twenty-fifth, twenty-five meeting, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite the council, if there's any question for staff. Anyone? Vice Mayor Manzo?
The first one I have is, what are, what position are we into? I'm really interested in increasing our red reserve, you know, levels right now. We're at seventeen.
Seventeen percent, yes.
Seventeen percent, yeah, so, but as you can see, in the coming years, we're going to be having to, to keep status quo, we're going to have to keep pulling from the reserves.
So our total is above seventeen percent. We have an emergency reserve of seventeen percent. So the emergency reserve totals fifteen point four million, and then we have unassigned balance of thirty point, almost six million, making our total projected reserve at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six year forty-five, almost forty-six million dollars.
Yes, but that's the current one. But in the future years coming, we will be having, we get down to, I mean, pretty, every year we keep going down, correct?
Yeah, it got down in the projected twenty-nine, thirty year to thirty-eight point nine million.
Yeah, so in order to keep that seventeen percent level, we won't be able to...
We would still make that.
You'd still make that?
It's about fifteen and a half million, so the thirty-eight point nine would still cover that seventeen. So, the 38.9 would still cover that 17%.
But we won't need to keep our 17% reserve level in there, right?
We will still... It would still be there, yes. Unless the council chose to remove it, but it's in the policy. But as far as priorities, in years of surplus, additional money could be added to that, or it could be added to other items on the pension costs, capital projects. It could be put as a reserve, or it could be allocated to a project or something like that when we have a surplus
Yeah.
to be used in the future.
Okay. Can you go back to page, I think it's 16? 16, 17?
The projections?
Yeah. So, this is the one I was speaking. You said that the reserve is dwindling.
Right. So, that reserve balance is the total of that reserve balance. 17% is reserved for an emergency, and the remainder is considered unassigned, excuse me. So, right now, the 17% is about 15 and 1/2 million. So, this, even through '29, '30, we would still need that.
Can we put that image up on the screen? Thanks. Thank you.
If you... Do you have your budget in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at page... It's page 7. And if you look at the blue column at the very bottom.
The 45, 9?
Right. So, that's the 46 million that's shown on the slide in the shaded column. But that 46 million or 45, 983 is split between the emergency reserve and the unassigned. So, that emergency reserve would continue just at that same percentage. So, every year, it's adjusted to 17% of our operating expenditures.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't like... I just don't like seeing it going down.
Right.
I mean, we should keep... We should be adding, not subtracting. That's my point.
I understand.
So, that's something that we need to work on. What was... Do you see any... Any areas that you'll see that will be getting less revenue? Like, for one example, is the mall... The revenue that comes out of the mall area right now in the future years?
We have adjusted some of those in our projections. And obviously, the hope is some of our vacancy buildings and other retail locations will help offset some of that. But yes, we have already seen some of that slow.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you have. And then where are we at with our... The vehicle tax... The vehicle rebate? Is that still... Program still... Is still active? There's still money?
It is still active, yes. We can sign in to see what we've spent this year, but I don't have a... Actually... In '23, '24, we spent 220,000 on it, and it's out of the Economic Development Fund, and we're running around that same total for the current year, 225,000.
And what was the total funding allocated for that program?
We... I believe it's... And I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's 500,000 a year. But I'm not sure on the total. Do you remember the total? We'll look it up.
It's 500 a year for how many years?
Yeah. Let's... Just one second.
Five years?
On the website, actually.
Okay.
Search... There's a page...
You can get back to me on that.
Yeah, we'll get back to you. I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Then, the next question I have... When are we... When is our next day when we're doing our cost recovery fees?
That will be coming to the council on the June 25 meeting with the budget. We're in the process of it right now.
Okay. All right. That's all I got for now.
Thank you very much. Anything from the council? Council member Mark Wayne?
Yeah. I saw some of the position on some of the departments going from part-time to full-time. Can you elaborate again on some of the reason why we're going?
Do you have a specific position? I'd have the department answer that.
Like the... Was it the Community Department?
The Community Development or Community Services?
Community Services.
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the city council. Yes, the request is to convert some part-time hours staff that work Community Services front desk. We've seen high turnover rate over the last five years. And so, in effort to be consistent and provide better service, to release some of the continual training that our full-time staff has to do with those part-time people, that we're requesting to convert 40 of those hours to a full-time administrative assistant to man our front desk.
Is this pretty much the same reason for the other positions in the other departments that are going from part-time to full-time also?
Can you repeat that?
So, is this... Is this pretty much a similar justification for some of the other position?
I would defer to those other department heads. I would imagine it's very consistent. It's that high turnover, consistent, ongoing training we're having to do with those part-time staff. And, you know, they come on board. For us specifically, we've had a number of staff stay less than a year. So, once we train them, they either move on to somewhere that's paying slightly bit better, or they've taken another position within the department.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Maybe better off... Can you go back to those slides has the positions?
I'm sorry.
Could you go back to the slide that have positions? So, that maybe probably is better for him to...
Of course. This is the first one. This was the Community Service Position and the Community Development Position. So, the Full-Time Building Inspector from a part-time. And then the next one were the police positions, the Dispatch Manager and the Parking Enforcement Officers.
Anything else?
And then the last one were the water positions. The new Full-Time Accountant One Position, the Water Tech One Position, and the Administrative Assistant Position.
Yeah. So, I have another question. Just keep it there. Slide 21, right? Okay. My understanding is that right now, as of right now, we have a long period of time. We have a long schedule for those people who want to install the new meters, water meters. And because of that, we actually contracted it out to the vendors. So, if they want to... If they want to, they can go out and get the vendors and get it quickly. And if they want to wait for the city, it costs less. But at the same time, it takes longer for us to fulfill that. Will we... If we approve these new positions for... As requested, do you think that we are going to improve the schedule for the water meter installment?
So, we have people from Public Works that can address that
Okay.
concern or be able to elaborate a little bit more on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, they can actually explain a little bit more about what the water tech does and what the roles are and who actually does installations versus...
Hi. Good afternoon, council, mayor, vice mayor, member of council. So, the Public Works Department is putting in two requests. The first one is to combine or eliminate two part-time positions for meter reader, and we combine it to one full-time. And the reason for that is, you know, with the part-timers, very similar to what Vanessa mentioned. There's not a lot of reliability or commitment from the staff. It is a high turnover. So, you know, with new staff, we have to keep on training over and over, over and over for them to replace these meters. So, we believe that with the full-time, you get more vested interest in that position for long-term. And then the second position is to eliminate the part-time Admin Assistant Position and combine it into a full... Create a full-time. Because again, we have a lot of new mandate from state and federal government. And just to name a few, like the lead-in copper, cross-connection, which we have an ordinance going out tonight. And also brake registry. They want us to identify any time that there's a water loss. They want to count for it. And also, there's water conservation as well. And if you want to hear more detail, we actually have the Management Analyst, Nolani Liu, with us tonight. She's in this program for a long time, and she can better explain those new requirements that we have to face.
Tuan, just... Tuan, following up on the mayor's question. It had to do with new development. So, when a new... Let's just say ADUs, for example. When ADUs are opening up, there is a delay in essentially establishing that connection. And a significant delay if they're going to go with the city option. Will these positions benefit or streamline or shorten that delay? That's the question.
No, because that... The position... First position is for meter reading only. So, we have roughly 20,600 meters throughout the city that needs to be read for one-year cycle. We do roughly seven times a year. So, we have... We prefer to have full-time staff dedicated to just reading that because that becomes a revenue source for the city. Then, when you talk about ADU, that's different, where developers have the option either to wait for us, city staff, which is we have limited staff, or they can hire their own contractor and then do the installation. For our lead time is... Should be nine months?
Nine months.
Nine months?
Yeah. That's what I have. I have a lot of complaints from the residents that they do the new build, the new ADU. And they said that for the city of Westminster, it takes nine months to install the water meter. And I checked with staff, and I understand that we have limited... Just like you said, we have limited staff. And if they want to move quicker, then they can go out and get a contractor to do that for them.
Exactly. Right. We usually streamline, like, the review process for them to submit the plans to us.
Right.
But as far as like staff time, we have so many leaks throughout the week. So, for example, this week, we have two leaks.
Okay. And my question for you is, I understand they compare it from city to city, if like, you know, the surrounding city or neighboring city, that they do much quicker or faster than we are here in city of Westminster. What can we do in order to improve that process?
As far as like city staff do the actual installation?
If we... If we need to improve that quicker than nine months that we have currently, and... Will you require more of the staff? And how many? If there is a requirement, how much?
I would say I have to plan internally, but definitely the more staff, the better will be. The increase in construction crew to perform that work would be necessary to increase productivity.
Are they adding two more for that? Is it going to work to help? Of course, it's help, but you know, it's what I said. But then, my question... The next question to you is, by adding two more manpower to that, of course, we are going to spend money to pay for that. Do you think that we have enough projects to recover that cost?
Let me discuss internally and get back to you with that manpower. But definitely two would help.
Okay. Right. All right. Thank you very much. Do you have any idea of... If we go for two, how many... What is the cost of two manpower? Oh, you want to come back for that?
Well, the Tech One costs $85,360 for one.
170 a year?
Okay.
Fully?
That's a fully burdened cost, yes.
Yeah. And I know that city of Westminster is doing a lot of ADUs. Right now, we consist of a lot of ADUs.
There's quite a few.
Yeah, I know. And it's a good thing. You know, I have, you know, people could do us for that. But at the same time, you know, is... They complain about the long process of getting the water meters installed. So, why don't you do the cost comparison and to see if we can offset that? And, you know, you can come back, you know, and present it to the council.
Definitely will, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you go back to slide number 20... Number 16?
16, yes. Oh, I'm going around.
Yeah, I have very much... I have the same concerns as Vice Mayor Menzel. Seeing that we are eating into the reserve is not what we want to see. I believe that you probably go over this one already, but I just want to make sure that why we are going from, you know, from the revenue that we are going to get more, but then the expenditures is, you know, more and more every year, that we have to go into the reserve. We have to get into the reserve.
Well, quite honestly, a large part of the expenditure increase is our unfunded liability costs from PERS. And those change based on the interest rate. But you could see on the slide the large jump. I believe it goes in... I forget the percentages, but there's the big jump in fiscal year '28, '29, and they project a 9% increase that year. So, every year, even if we're keeping costs low, that is... That was that other slide that I showed you. It was on nine. You could see these large increases. So, this is a... We have to pay this. We don't have any choice. It's our unfunded liability, and PERS tells us what we have to place or to pay. This is why we're putting some money in those, the 115 trusts, like I mentioned. So, in those years where we're... Where we have a deficit, So in those years where we're, where we have a deficit, we may want to pull some of this, this money here, the 6.2 million in each of these. We could pull some of that to cover our budget in those years when the PERS or the PERS unfunded liability costs spike. So when we have a surplus like the current year, we could put additional money there and then use that money for those costs that increase in the future. So some of the funding priorities might be to put additional funding in the 115 trust to cover years when we aren't as positive as we would prefer to be.
Yeah, I understand. Besides that, I believe that there is an increase from OCFA with 4.5%.
Correct. That's in there as well.
Yeah. That does not help. But back to that, with this projection that you have for, for the next five years, do you have any ideas or staff came up with any idea that we can recover or trying to get some revenue in such as? I know there are a few projects that we have in place, which is the billboards or, you know, the Westminster Mall or, you know, some of those. Do you think that it's going to help?
Oh, absolutely. They're just not in here yet. They'll be in here as soon as we can project for them. As part of the strategic plan, there were a couple items for us to bring back to the council on some additional revenue sources. So that will be coming back to you as well. But we don't have those, we won't have these items in our projection until we have a, a good idea of when they're starting and the dollar amount.
But do you have any plan that lay out, you know, that is, if it would help to recover the cost if we implement these projects? Let's say, example, I know that the cannabis, they brought up a couple of times already and they projected, you know, the, the revenue. If we were to implement the, the program, will it help with the?
Oh, absolutely. Any additional revenue will help this for sure. And that is one of the items that will be brought back to the council. And I believe it's in June, the second meeting in June, I believe, we will bring that item to you.
Okay. And then they have a chance to present it to us that what is the?
Different, yes, the ones that were discussed at the strategic plan, we'll bring those back.
Okay.
And I have the list.
Okay.
I have a follow up question. Thank you, Mayor. So back to the mayor's point on, I mean, and we, and trying to be here in reality, you know, with a lot, like those items at the mall and the billboard, I mean, they're, I mean, they're, we don't even have a date set right now. So I mean, we're talking, you know, you can honestly say it's more than five years from now, you'll see anything. And as you can see, every year, you know, we'll be dipping into the reserve. And the quickest, out of all those examples that we had looked at for possible new revenue, I mean, to me, the one since the mayor brought up the cannabis, that is probably the quickest source of future revenue. Would you, would you guess to say yes on that or? I mean, if you're looking at a time, timeline, I mean, I don't know. Adolf, I don't know. I mean, if you're looking at anything permitting, building, I mean, the mall isn't even, not even nowhere near anything as far as starting anything. So that's, I would even guess to say eight years down the road, you know, before you see any revenue out of there. And the billboard, I think they're not going to start any construction this year. From what I understand, they're going to start construction if they get all their entitlements. Hopefully next year in 2026. And then you're talking about construction. So it'd be a long time before you see any revenue coming out of that.
Yeah, there's a huge upside to those topics you brought up, but they are not immediately around.
They're not immediately, that's my point. They're further down, there's years away. So time is not on our side, obviously. We need to, as a council and staff, we need to find a way to quickly generate as much revenue as possible to make up some of these losses. And we're going to increase also, we have coming up our negotiation with our unions. That's coming up. So the numbers you had on the slide, those are going to change as well. Chances are they're going to, expenditures are going to increase. They're not going to decrease.
That's correct.
So.
I do have some future project, in the future, or in the projections for expenditures and revenue. I do have increases, but they're, they're fairly conservative on both the revenue and the expenditure side.
So yeah, time is not on our side. We need to do what we can to help ourselves and give us the best chance of success. And, and then also too, you know, the everything that's hurting us. And right now we have a cost savings of vacancies. And, but those vacancies are hurting our service, the service that we provide. Because as the mayor mentioned, you know, that to me, nine months for a water meter, that's, to me, that's, I would say unacceptable. But, you know, we shouldn't, they shouldn't be taking that long. But if you don't have the, the staffing, there's little, very little you can do. The other position, the other department that I find that it's really hurting us right now because we don't, it's understaffed. There's our community development, that is revenue generating department that we need desperately get up and running and staff so we can process applications, process, you know, we have these construction projects to get that revenue coming in. So that's another area that we need to do better in. My personally, I would like to get into the position where we hire more code enforcement officers. Right now we're really understaffed on that position, that department, I should say. And that, that is also hurting us. We need to do better on that as well. So that's all I got for now.
Yeah, I, I know that you, you have a date that you're coming back for approval. What, what date is that?
June 25.
June 25. Okay, we still have June 10, something meeting, right? I have a question. Can you go back to the favorite chart, number 21?
21, yes. Also, Vice Mayor, to answer your question, the vehicle rebate program is 3 million over five years. We have spent 454,000 for two years, a little over two years.
450?
21, 21, not 20.
21, this is 20.
Oh, there, number 16 there.
16?
Yeah, 16.
The projections?
This is the one.
Okay.
Okay. I know that you said that all the projects that we just mentioned, like billboards, cannabis and, you know, all those projects that we were looking forward to, you don't have it here.
Correct.
Because you don't, what happened if you, can you establish something like this? With the best estimate that, that you can have from, from those programs? And I believe that there is, the cannabis is coming up this month, right?
Well, I think we could.
Before the, the date that we are going to?
Same date.
Same date.
Same date. I believe we could make a list of potential revenues that we're looking at in the future and give you years when those might be implemented.
Yes.
I hesitate to put anything in a projection that, like this, that's not.
I, I understand, but just guess, best estimate so that we can understand. If we as a council approve, approve these projects, it will offset what?
We certainly could give you something. We could add a line for, or something that would show you additional revenue options in the future.
Well, so just to kind of jump in, and I understand everyone's concern about the budget. You know, the, the difficulty about government budgets is we can't really account for money that we don't have. And certainly some of the projections that are provided, I hear myself echo them right now, I'm sorry. The, so the, you know, the projections that we, that we have on some of the projects that are coming, you know, their best estimates, you know, for example cannabis, you know, a, a certain group can say they're going to bring in X amount of revenue, but it's really not that. And so I, you know, I, I'm reluctant to bring that kind of information as well. You know, certain areas that we can always look at, I mean, revenues right now, we always project them as very conservative coming in. You know, we can look at a, maybe a slight, a slightly higher increase, assuming that the market is still viable. We can look at, you know, revenues being higher, sales tax revenue, for example, being higher than, than what's currently projected. As far as, you know, we, we've talked about this in previous meetings where there aren't projects that are going to necessarily bring these big cash outs, which is what's really difficult. It's usually a multitude of different developments and multiple projects. Like we have, you know, we talk about the mall, we talk about, you know, we talk about the mall, we talk about cannabis, you know, with these larger amounts. But we also have other projects in the pipeline that are going through the development phase that are also going to generate monies as well. The only problem is because they're going through the phase, we can't really talk about how much money we're expecting. There's also other, you know, we talked about billboards, we talked about our city billboard program. But, you know, as you'll see later on the, the regular meeting agenda, there's, you know, there are other billboards that are bringing in revenues as well. So it's all these things that are added together. You know, I think if, if the council has a, an, an interest in maybe looking at this a little bit further, taking into account to some of the positions, other supplementals that you're interested in, we can do another study session before, you know, the June, the, the second meeting in June. We can certainly bring some of those numbers back. You know, as far as, as far as supplementals, you know, staff every year, we're, we're all very, we're all very aware and conservative when it comes to like our needs. Things do take longer than others because unfortunately we don't have the staffing to, to, to basically catch up with the increase, the extremely, you know, increased expectations and workload that we have. And some departments really see that challenge more than others. You know, community services one, we've had, we went from what, three events to like 300 a year. And sometimes I feel like that's not an exaggeration, but it's also like the, the magnitude of things as well. You know, so there, there are a lot other, a lot more supplemental requests that were not presented to you. Cause our goal this year was to, to present a balanced budget. Certainly, you know, that's what the study session is for. You know, I understand the ADUs and the water meters, we've been doing a lot. And that's because a lot of property owners don't want to pay the contractor. And so we do the best we can to accommodate. But yes, nine months sounds like a long time. If hiring, will hiring more reduce that from nine months to two months? I don't know. Will it reduce it down to seven months? Maybe. But those are things we'll have to look at. And then code enforcement, you know, as you know, we've had a lot of changes in code enforcement. Do we feel like there is a lot that can be done in code enforcement? And absolutely, code enforcement, they're really the eyes and ears of the city. And they're kind of the gatekeepers of our city's beautification, right? So, you know, but we're going through processes to try to enhance and improve that division as well with, you know, changes in staff. And so, but we understand the need. But all these needs, they cost money.
Yeah.
So it's, we're just trying to balance what we can with what we have. But we can come back to another study session.
I certainly don't, I don't think that we need another study session. As we are going through the fiscal year of 2025, 2026, I don't have any problem with that. But now the, you know, now the road, 2026, up to 2029 to 30, then we have a problem with that. And knowing that there are certain projects or certain programs that we are going to implement next year. So we can always discuss about it and, you know, take that into consideration. Knowing that, you know, if we are not doing anything else, then we are going to dip into the, you know, the, the reserve. So I think that that's probably okay for now, so.
And mid-year, mid-year is actually a great time for us to look at where we're at too. As far as, you know, when we're looking into next year's budget, budget cycle as well. Yes, you know, as someone had mentioned, next year, we're going to be going into, you know, negotiations as well. And what that looks like may also impact what our expenditures look like. But on top of that too, there's, you know, there are a lot of expectations in the workforce right now as far as wages. There's, you know, battles of minimum wage and, and fair wage, et cetera. And, you know, a different concessions that the workforce is really, it's changed a lot, especially since COVID, right? So, so it's been, it's very, it's been very challenging in, in terms of a personnel perspective to, to kind of tackle those issues. But, but certainly, yeah, we can come back with another study session. And, you know, we're, we're definitely moving forward with being more aggressive in terms of economic development, bringing in different projects. We're, we're very focused on that. And of course, you know, we, we appreciate the council's support and some of the things that we've been doing over the last, you know, three and a half so years with just looking at development and, you know, mixed use zoning, different zoning, specific plans and, you know, and, and areas that we can improve to make ourselves more development and business friendly. So that, that's always helpful too. You know, this council hasn't been sitting, you, you have been sitting on your hands and some of these issues that we've, you know, that, that we've had over the years, you know, it's, it's not any one of this council's fault. It's preceded your time for decades. So, you know, we've, we've still been moving along the last few decades, I mean, the last few years, so.
Thank you for that. And I just want to say, I appreciate the staffs and I'm really proud of, of staff that really presented us with a balanced budget the first time in six years. You know, that's, that's not, nothing that's kind of just brushed aside, that's, that's huge. So I appreciate all staff's efforts. And I also, you know, the, like you mentioned, city manager about there's more positions obviously that we need. But you're trying to balance our budget. So I appreciate that. And, and those positions that, that were mentioned, you know, they're, I feel they're all justifiable. I think that they were needed and, you know, those, I wish we can do more. There is something else that I, maybe I'll, maybe with the police chief, you can get with them. You know, I'm interested in, I think I spoke to you about this before. I don't think we have enough flock cameras in our city. And, and that's something that I think that's really important to keep our city, our residents safe. I don't know what they cost, you know, I don't know if there's a number that you can get us.
We can, we can add that.
Yeah, just, just for, for information.
Yeah, we can, we can add that to, you know, the next round of essentially supplementals, see what those costs look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. In a sense of time, I, we must have to end this meeting before 5:30 because we have to start with the close session at 5:30. So it's very informative. We don't have to take any action today. So it's, I just wanted to thank the staff for all the information presented. And hopefully that you can bring back on the next, the 26th, right? It's the 26th of June so that we can adopt for the 20, 25, 26, 24, 25?
25, 26.
25, 26 budget fiscal year. All right. Is there any other question from council members? All right. If not, then once again, thank you very much. And I would like to adjourn the meeting here. And so we'll come back at 5:30 for the close session. Thank you very much.